We will call the meeting to order. You all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Mr. City Attorney, as a special meeting, a public comment also in order?
There's no obligation to take general public comment, but of course, the council may do so if desired.
Okay.
You must take public comment on the item.
Right. I have one card that's labeled "General Comment." I don't know if it's for the item that's on the agenda or just general public, but Delaney? Are you out there?
I was just gonna do public speaking at the beginning.
Yeah, that's what he's doing.
Right.
Hi, Delaney Ellis, 206 South Blanche. What a surprise to be the first and only one up here. I have been, I really just found out about this meeting, so I'm here to listen primarily and find out, you know, what is being proposed. But I have been following the tiny home movement for several years, and I think that it is one answer to housing in this community.
Did you want to discuss that particular item?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay.
I'm good. I just, I'm thrilled to see we're discussing this, and I hope to see that we can find someplace for this in our city. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our discussion item, the request that was continued from our last council meeting on the grant from Fannie Mae, or to, yeah, the application for a grant to Fannie Mae for monies for an innovation challenge and partner. I do have some cards on this, so, is it Ida Maxim? I'm not sure if I pronounced it. I'm reading it.
Wouldn't it be, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
What?
Wouldn't it be good for those that are new here to at least give just a little bit of an explanation of what this is about? Maybe Councilmember Bill Wirick and I could say something?
Okay, well, it's a continuation of the topic.
Okay.
It's a council pleasure that we review the...
Just for, just an introduction.
I knew so, I'm not...
Yeah, just... Well, Vina, Vina and, Vina, maybe you could, could, or Paul, could say something. That would be the best, to describe, that this is an application for a grant, for, for funding.
Well, why doesn't one of the proposers of it, either you or...
I'm sorry, I opened my mouth. But it just seemed, okay, so, basically, we're asking, the reason we're here, is my understanding, is that we've been, we've been working on this for a long time, you know, to find some way, this is one aspect, to enter, to have some kind of affordable by design housing here in the, in the city of Ojai and also in the unincorporated area at some point. And Vina Lustado is an internationally known designer. She's very well vetted, and other, there's other speakers, people who will speak tonight, who have been on this committee. And I was brought to my attention a few months ago that there is what's known as a Fannie Mae Sustainable Communities Innovation Challenge, known in short as the Challenge. It's where what we're, what we're aiming to submit tomorrow, tomorrow's the deadline, is a proposed application supporting a demonstration project for a workforce, affordable, tiny home community in Ojai. And the reason we're having the meeting at noon today, because a lot of people were questioning that, is because Monday was a holiday, we couldn't have it on Monday, and on the other nights, there were other commissions meeting. Hence, this was the only time we could meet before the deadline tomorrow. And basically, what we're asking the city is to, to support this project. Nothing has been decided yet, and there will be members of the public speaking about the process that we're proposing. Anything else?
If I could ask to add a couple things, Mayor?
Sure.
So, what this is, is a challenge for Fannie Mae and a Fannie Mae program. And I would appreciate maybe a representative or two of the, of the actual applicants to come forward, because what's going on here is that the city is not the applicant. The city is not making any legal commitment with respect to land, our funds, our staff time. The only issue before us today is whether the city will authorize a letter of support for this challenge. And the letter of support basically states the need, states, restates the information that is in our, already in the housing element of our general plan, and indicates that the city thinks this is a, would be helpful for this effort, basically to be part of our programs in our general plan. The, in the housing element of our general plan. In particular, developing recommendations for how our codes could facilitate affordable housing options, either movable homes on, on wheels or tiny homes on foundations. Looking at the economics, going through in particular, a focused study, analysis, and public charrette process. So, a lot of issues that have come up in terms of debate are exactly the kind of issues that would be part of this challenge in a structured public process. So, it's a way for us to have a public conversation about these issues in a way that gets support or is supported by this Fannie Mae challenge. So, that's really what is at issue today, is whether the city council wants to vote for a letter of support for this challenge for something that we are not the applicant for, and that we are not committing any legal resource, not making any legal commitment for resources for it this time.
Okay, we will take public comment. Is it Ida? Ada?
Yeah.
Ida, okay, Ida, you're on. And Diane, is that Montgomery?
McCourtney.
McCourtney, okay, on deck. Okay, you're up close, okay.
Hi, my name is Ida Maxim, and I have been an Ojai resident for seven, eight years. I am in love with this town, like many, many people. I'm a single mom sending my daughter through college, juggling taking care of an elderly mom and a nonprofit job. I've been renting, I've been a homeowner. I, I really can't afford to stay in, living in Ojai anymore, and I'm finding it very challenging, because I love it here, I want to stay here. I can't save any money, I'm almost 60, and it's, it's a daunting process. And I'm absolutely thrilled by the possibility of affordable housing in a place in, in the town. And I, and I think it's a, it's an, it's, it's a leap of faith, it's an experiment. There are many issues, there's so many reasons why this is such a great idea. I, I realize that there are many nuts and bolts that have to be worked out. But I'm sure there are a number of people who are like myself in a very challenging situation here in town. And I don't want to have to leave, I really don't. And so, I am throwing my full support behind this project. I'm willing to be an investor, I'm willing to take the, the risk and take a chance on it. I think it's a great model, I think it's a great model as an example for other communities. And I would love to see it happen. And I'm really hoping that you will support it, the idea, and, and see what can happen, because I, I just think it's a great idea for so many people to be able to live in it. I, I don't want to live in a place that's illegal and not up to code and not safe, and I, I just don't want to do that. And I don't want, I, I would love to, there to be a, a structured way of making this happen in a way that is, that works for the community, that works for people like myself, and that works for the town, and is an example for other communities, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Paul.
I don't know what the model is.
No, nor do I.
So, what is the model? Are we talking about people that are current tenants are going to buy, is it supposedly they're going to buy the tiny homes and put them here? Is it going to rent? Are we going to have?
Right, yeah, those are good questions.
I don't understand what, but they're, they're commenting that they liked the model.
Right.
Well, what model do they like?
Right, well, the answer is, is it, the answer is, it's not clear. They're supposedly going to explore a model.
Oh, okay.
But let's hear from the, the public for whatever, and then when we get into deliberation...
I thought I was missing something, because when a speaker says, "I love this model,"
Yeah, I could answer that.
and I have no idea what the model is.
Right.
I'll help answer that when the time comes.
Yeah, as will I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Diane McCourtney, 204 Fox Street. Thank you for your time today. I am a 15-year resident of Ojai, and I have personally experienced the rapid disappearance of affordable housing. I raised three sons in this valley. None of them live here anymore because of the cost of our real estate. And clearly, the Thomas Fire has created a great sense of urgency, as the need for alternative and affordable housing is needed now more than ever. In 2008, I downsized and built a 1,000-square-foot house, pretty small. An eco-friendly house, I created a smaller footprint, and I got really interested in small living, and I've been studying it ever since. I'm convinced that the tiny house on wheels movement and the tiny house village concept on wheels movement is, is, is exactly what we need now. I, I feel for the woman who just spoke, that the, there's so many people that are just about to have to leave because we're out of affordability. So, as I've studied this model and fallen in love with tiny house living, time is of the essence and the need is urgent, and I am willing to invest in this project at a $60,000 level to build an eco-friendly tiny house on wheels, which will create a moderately affordable housing for locals. Many other people can do that as well. So, here's a model. I'm envisioning a cluster of tiny houses on wheels and one tiny house on a foundation to serve as a library and a storage area. And there are multi-generational residents. Eventually, a number of small tiny house pocket neighborhoods could be, could happen all over town. It creates community instantly. It's, it's just such a healthy way to live. It's, it creates minimal environment impact and safe and secure homes at affordable costs, and I really, really plead with you to please help support Ojai becoming affordable again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I have, I have one question.
Well, not, well...
Yeah, I just would like to clarify, can I clarify one thing with, with your comment? Are you saying that you're willing to build a tiny home and, and give it to this, this grant program?
And have it be a part of a model to establish tiny home neighborhoods. It would be, maybe I would live in it. Maybe I would rent my 1,000-square-foot big house at an affordable price for someone else to live in, so I could live in it. And maybe I could rent it to somebody who has lost their home.
Okay, thank you.
It's many, many possibilities, but it's one of many people doing the same thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Gary Hirschcrum?
Is it Gary? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And...
Thank you. I'm Gary Hirschcrum, I live at 2661 Ladera, and my wife, Tom, and you and I are speaking in support of the, the letter of support. We'd be willing to be investors in a tiny home community. We have, we, we own a house here ourselves. We've had somebody living with us through the fire, and we're, you know, very well aware of the need for affordable housing. You know, the, I read once that the chief designer for Mercedes said that the hardest part in engineering is compromise. And because you'd like to build a car that's big and fast and fuel-efficient and affordable and safe, but to really do that, the art is figuring out how to trade those against each other. And sort of similarly, I think in this area, we'd like to have a regulatory structure that has, that promotes housing that's well-built, that's sound, that we have perfect land use, and that we have affordability. And those, like the different objectives for the Mercedes, are conflicting to some extent. And when you look at the fact that our housing and our cost of housing construction are so out of whack and about the worst in the United States, you see that these different interests haven't really been well-balanced, and that we need to, we, that the regulatory structure should be adjusted to promote affordability. And, and to some extent, it has to be at the expense of perfection in some of those other objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, again. Is it Carletta, or is it Carlet or Charletta? How do they pronounce that?
Charlita.
Charlita, okay.
Charlita, or marriage family therapist by day, a musician by night, that's me. I'm reading a letter on behalf of Celia and Scott Graber, who are residents on Eucalyptus Street. "My husband and I purchased a fixer-upper in downtown Ojai in August 2016. We were looking for a small house, preferably under 1,000 square feet, built in the '30s or '40s, but still in good shape. Our hope was that it would be on an R2 lot so that we could build a second small dwelling, and most importantly, that it be in the heart of downtown Ojai. Purchasing it proved to be as difficult as finding it, as there is so little inventory in Ojai. But when all was said and done, my husband and I agreed that our treasured property would never be sold again in our lifetime. We now know all too well how scarce properties are in Ojai and how increasingly expensive they have become. As we started preparing the little casita, neighbors were curious as to what we were up to. They asked if we planned to flip the house or rent it out an Airbnb or vacation rental by owner. They were all somewhat puzzled when we clarified that our plans were a bit old-fashioned and that our goal was to provide long-term sustainable housing for an individual couple or family with a deep appreciation for the natural beauty, safety, community, and sheer magic of Ojai. We were able to rent out the casita. In a matter of months, we realized that there is a huge demand for affordable rentals in Ojai and not enough of them to go around. It was our intention always to build a second tiny house on the property, but we had no idea how urgent the need for these small dwellings would be, and then the horrific Thomas Fire swept through Ojai. And we have sadly seen this great need increase. With this accelerated need in mind, we are committed to both supporting and building a second affordable dwelling under 500 square foot, foundation-based, with environmentally friendly materials and practices. Thankfully, Ojai is the home to a remarkable architectural designer at the forefront of the tiny house movement, Vina Lustado. We have so much respect for her commitment to sustainable building practices, as well as her minimalist design aesthetic and deep love for the Ojai Valley. We reached out to Vina about designing our second dwelling, because we knew she would understand how to best use the 500 square feet or less that we were allowed, and we knew that every design and material choice would be respectful of the environment. In closing, we hope that you will consider the Ojai Valley a perfect choice for an experimental, sustainable community project. I cannot think of a better city for this type of experiment. To bring so much hope to a community shortly after experiencing the devastating natural disaster would be heartening, to say the least, because we all know a home does not only provide shelter, it offers safety, community, stability, dignity, and promise. Thank you."
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask the speaker a question? How much are they renting their little cottage for?
It's not stated in the letter.
Do you know?
No.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, Patty Arons?
We can find out.
Hi, my name is Patty Arons. I'm with Remex Gold Coast. I actually live in Oxnard for 42 years, but for the past four years, I've had a little niche in mobile homes up here in Ojai. Since starting at Ojai Oaks Village, which is a family park four years ago, the mobile home prices in there were 50, 65, 75,000 tops on the older models. Today, they have doubled. One that sold for 65,000, that I sold four years ago, is now listed at 149,000. What has also happened is the supply is, and, and the reason the prices went up is because of supply and demand. I also was used to selling 15, 17 mobiles a year. Last year, I sold five, because the inventory was so low on mobile homes. I wrote an article trying to get the Ojai Real Estate Magazine to put this article in about the need for the tiny house village and that we need more affordable housing around here. When I first started, I had to combat with people about the high space rent, but over the years, people realized that this is a good fit, especially the, you know, in the family parks, for young families to be able to afford to live. So, I fully support this. I wanted to come and experience and find out what this was all about. And I believe with the, this young lady saying, you know, that she'd invest 60,000, I bet you a lot of people would. To buy a mobile home, you've got to put on an older one about 20% down. A lot of people come in with cash. You pay for the, the mobile home for, have it to be built for 60,000, and then the people will be happy to pay a monthly space rent, just like they do in mobile home parks. So, I believe this is, is truly needed, and I hope you guys support it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Williamson?
Good afternoon, Ann Williamson, 1402 La Paz Drive, and I'm with Cobble Banker Property Shop in town, and I've been here for 22 years. I moved here from Hong Kong, so it was quite a shock to my system, because I came from such high density to this wonderful valley, which I truly still love every single day. You know, there's a lot of points to talk about. I think one of my greatest concerns, my greatest concern, number one, is going to be the, the additional attack on our natural resources, mainly water. And I, I know more than anybody else that we need affordable housing. I saw something yesterday that just made me sick, you know, someone single living in a second dwelling that was just pathetic. But I also am concerned about what this is going to do to town as far as the number of units that are going to be brought in. I mean, obviously, this hasn't been, I don't think wildly publicized enough, so we know what the study's about, what the village is going to be about, how many units are going to be allowed. Also, the regulations that are going to be put into place to control it. Because if we allow tiny homes to come in and there's not a specific set number, and then you're talking all these extra units plugging into sewer connections, using our water. What if we get like 400 tiny homes coming in for a weekend? Like, is it going to be people who can just come here? No. And live temporarily? So, but that's what we don't know. We haven't been informed in that, and we haven't been informed about the limitation of numbers and units. Because right now, obviously, our greatest concern is our water. There's many other points I know that other speakers are going to bring up, but I just wanted to let you know that's my greatest concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thinking this is Sharon, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Sorry that I...
That's okay, that's true.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Sharon Mahary. I own a business here in Ojai. I'm a broker with Keller Williams Realty on North Blanche. And of course, as realtors, this is of very high interest to us, although we're low information on the subject. I don't think any of us have read the grant, no one has come to speak to our board. We really don't know much about it, so, I mean, yesterday at our board meeting, we did a huge list of questions, because obviously, we need affordable housing. We see that in our business every single day. And we have a lot of substandard affordable housing that's, as Ann said, it's really a heartbreaking situation in many cases. But we, you know, in, without our knowledge to guide us, I mean, we have a lot of questions. Houses on wheels, how is that going to solve our affordability problem if they are just going to be passing through, you know, on their way to Oregon or wherever they're going? I think as a Realtor, just speaking for myself, not for the board, I'm concerned that we're going to create a transient population, much like our vacation rental problem was. So, those are a couple of big things. Also, I kind of like the village idea. I don't know where it would be, you know, because we have very little vacant land in this town. But I think that would make more sense, you know, to have it in a village where there's a sanitation, you know, is taken care of, it's homogeneous, you know, as, as a mobile home park is. And, you know, I think that could actually be awesome, but I don't know enough about it, you know, to, to tell you how it really feels. So, I, I just have to say, though, the wheels don't, I, I don't like that idea. I don't think that solves our, our problem. I think tiny homes on foundations could help allay our problem. I don't know how much research has been done locally to find out exactly how much we, you know, how many people are going to be interested in this, what's the market? What's the size of the market? Because, yes, I think in, as a category, affordable housing, everybody would say yes. As a concept, tiny homes, I don't know. You know, somebody with two or three kids, maybe not. So, I just think we need to know a lot more about it, and that's why I'm here today. So, thanks for giving me an opportunity to ask some questions.
I have a request.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
A request of...
The request would be if we could have one of the speakers, Paul Crabtree, come to the podium. I think a lot of the questions would be addressed.
Okay.
That's my request.
Right. The next card, Paul Crabtree. Paul, are you out there? Yeah.
Are you, you psychic?
Was it planned that way?
No, I just, thank you, thank you.
I'm Paul Crabtree, 918 Cuyama Road. I am a, to clarify my role, I'm a pro bono advisor to the applicants of the challenge. I won't receive any funds from it or do anything but volunteer work on it. The reason, there are several reasons I'm doing that. Part of it, a lot of it is in the letter of support that I, that's in the packet. I've done, my firm has engaged in dozens of public charrettes. We're trained in it, we've been doing it for years, and it's an amazing process for really sticky problems like this. Another in, sort of, reason is that after the fires, I've been wanting to be able to contribute in some way, and I thought that I saw this, I just saw it on the agenda, and contacted Bill and Susan about it. Another reason is that we, my firm in Colorado got approved a tiny home village of over 100 units. And it was a great process with the... And it was a great process with the, with the city and everything, and it's actually on hold now because of the land costs and the cost to, to do the infrastructure. And so I, I find this an amazing problem of how to provide market rate affordable in a well-designed situation that can still be affordable and accepted by the community. And I, I sort of see this as an opportunity for the community to all come together and figure, figure out how to do this. I've seen some of the objections. I thought the, the last, I watched the video of the last council meeting, it was amazing that of all the issues that are, that are, that need to be addressed, and people that are, that have concerns, have valid concerns, and I think the, this public charrette process is a, is a proven way to do that.
Mayor? Mayor, have a question. Thank you. Good question.
So just to reiterate, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that integral to this whole challenge is a charrette process to allow the community to come together, debate, be informed, learn of all these issues that have been raised.
Right.
And I think that's kind of what the whole point is.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's my understanding, and that's indeed what's going on here.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, that's all the cards we have, so we, oh. Bill.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley, and I have lived here for a long time. And I hope I live here longer, too. I've paid attention to this discussion since it was started several months ago, or maybe even longer. I have read the materials that have been provided, most of which came yesterday. Also, I updated myself on the National Charrette Institute, which was mentioned, and charrettes in general. I have been actively involved in affordable housing, subjects including helping craft the last two city housing elements that was starting eight years, eight years or so ago. Now my comments, here are my comments about the agenda item. I believe strongly this belongs to the County of Ventura Government, and not the City of Ojai. The needs as described in the applicant's materials, the main need is that there's the loss of many houses in Upper Ojai and in the East End due to the Thomas Fire. These were all in the unincorporated area of the county, and it, in my opinion, belongs to the county, their jurisdiction. The county has much land at the old Honor Farm. In reading all the materials, I saw no effort in this grant that was made to ask the county Comments relative to the primary means of accomplishing this, that has to do with the charrette. It proposes a charrette process to reach the end goals and means. These are not new to Ojai. Within the past couple of years, we had a three-day charrette on the Safe Streets Plan, which was proposed or prepared by the Planning Commission Safe Streets Committee. And it was administratively directed by Greg Grant, who's our Public Works Director. My next comment is the charrette element goal, which as I see it, is the central feature of this proposed grant proposal. And that is to establish a tiny house village with wheels and foundations. I don't see that goal in our housing element. If we have any need, if we have a need for a housing charrette, it should focus on the whole housing element, since there is definitely a need for more and innovative possibilities And finally, I've been very active with, in affordable housing for the last five or six years. We created Affordable Housing Committee a number of years ago. And about two years ago, two and a half years ago, we proposed to the city a forty-unit apartment project, affordable housing-
Bill, are you getting close to the-
Yes, I am, uh huh.
Yeah, because your time is-
With people's self-help housing.
Right.
We proposed it for Site Ten and Site Eleven. The city, a former, a previous city council, the group denied us the opportunity to use that land, and so we weren't able to do anything about that. This-
Can you re-
Yes, this package has not been made public. I don't believe it meets the state transparency laws. Also, the city, the proposed letter for the city manager to sign says something like, he is saying, "A public design charrette is a proven protocol." I don't see that the city manager can say that, because I have no idea what his knowledge is. The letter has not been made public, and I think it needs to be before anything happens. So I strongly believe it belongs to the county jurisdiction, and asked the city council to so act on that.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Vina.
Hello, my name is Vina Lustado. I want to thank all of the city council and staff for attending today's meeting, because I know it's an emergency meeting on a workday, so I really appreciate that. Secondly, I want to just address the public concerns that there were previous meetings for city council in regards to this grant application for Fannie Mae. The first one was January ninth, where I had introduced this application to the city council for consideration. The second meeting was January twenty-third, when it was also discussed to have movable tiny homes as an ADU ordinance to be included, and the grant proposal was also discussed during that time. On February thirteenth, this agenda was also discussed to be considered as a grant application for Fannie Mae. And so during that meeting, there was a really, really urgent deadline for the grant, which is February twenty-third, which is tomorrow. So as a result of the Monday President's Holiday, we could not have the meeting any time until after then, and that's why today's meeting is, is an emergency meeting. So apologize that the public doesn't seem to know that there were previous meetings to this, it wasn't a sudden thing that we were trying to keep away from the general public. Just a few clarifications. Soul House Design is the applicant for this grant. It is in partnership with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, which is a nonprofit organization, as you know, within the city, and we want to keep this as open and engaging for the public as much as possible. This is really close and dear to us, to make it very open and transparent, and that's why Paul Crabtree was very willing to help with this, because he's an expert in making these design charrettes public and engaging, so that we really address the, the concerns from everyone. There was consideration on last twenty-third, February thirteenth meeting, that the site for this tiny home village, or tiny home demonstration project, was to be done at City Hall, and there was public outcry, which is completely understandable, because it's a very precious land, that we don't want overdeveloped, we don't want, you know, a lot of transancy. So this design charrette is really trying to address all the concerns involved. And so we are not demanding a site to be determined at this point, we are not demanding a specific look, or other than a really good quality design that is coherent with the rest of the character of Ojai, and we want the safety and code compliance that's necessary to partner with the city in order to make this doable, so that it's not illegal. We need a permanent dwelling for affordable housing that's not an RV. So we hope you would consider this application, and there is a lot of information that was given to the city, a very, like, twenty-page extensive application that has all the details on the budgets, it has details on the timeline, it has details on who is involved in, in the project. So it's all in the packet for the city council to review, and I think the, the rest of the public can even review it. And we had very limited time to put all of the grant requirements together, which is why a lot of the answers were just received the past week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please. Chris Gardner?
Yeah, I'm Chris Gardner, resident of Ojai. Couple things. First off, in short, I think Bill Miley summed up a lot of the issues extremely well. I think I, my comments would be in a couple areas. One, transparency's been mentioned a few times here. I would probably take umbrage with the view of the city council and their, what they believe is transparent versus what I think the city views as transparent. I think most of these people are many, who are here on a noon lunch break, for some. If you don't work in the city, you're not here on lunch break, right? Some of us do, right? You know, would say, I would guess ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the people don't even know this discussion's going on, right? And so to suggest that this is transparent, I think is a joke. All right, so that's the first thing. I don't know how a topic this important, effectively legalizing trailer parks in the city of Ojai, happens at noon on a Thursday, right, without really a good discussion. Second, I've heard someone, multiple people talk about this five-hundred-thousand-dollar Fannie Mae grant as free money. There is no such thing as free money. If you go to the feds and ask them for five-hundred-thousand dollars, they're going to have all kinds of requirements with what you can and what you can't do with that money. I would love to know where all that money's going. Five-hundred-thousand dollars comes in based on support of this council, and based on the support of this city. Many of the people who are speaking throughout this thing are special interests. They're manufacturing tiny homes, they're selling plans for tiny homes, they have an axe to grind, one way or the other. I am, thirdly, I am in favor of affordable housing, I actually supported the last plan, Site Ten. That was kicked back because it's park, it's not something else. One of the things I didn't understand about that proposal is the size of those units, right? Affordable to me isn't a thousand or fifteen-hundred square feet. If people are willing to live in smaller and smaller places, let's build some fixed affordable housing based on tiny construction. The biggest challenge I see, and I think there's a lot of debates to be had on, you know, tiny homes, not tiny homes, is wheels. I think you make something, you know, movable, people will move it. You can't tell them when to move it, when not to move it, how long to stay, where to stay. You know, go to Miners Oaks, you'll see lots of trailer homes, RVs parked in people's driveways with electrical plugs, et cetera, et cetera. People are living in them now. This will just make this problem even worse. Who's going to enforce that? You know, we have fences illegal, walls illegal, pop-up garages illegal, we have all kinds of things that are legal that the city does nothing about. This is just going to add to those challenges. So I would just say, I'm all in favor of charrette, I'm all in favor of great discussion, but, you know, going after five-hundred-thousand dollars just 'cause doesn't move that conversation forward. In my opinion, it moves it backwards, because you're already taking a path before you've got any reasonable input from the city.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I say one quick comment?
Uh, no ma'am, you, you've had your opportunity. Is there anybody else who hasn't had an op, no, you've had your opportunity, I mean, is there someone we have not heard from? Because it's not a debate. The debate will be here at the council table. You have someone in the back there?
Do I need a card? Do I need to fill out a-
Just come on.
You should have, but if you're-
You can come up.
Yeah?
Yes.
Here, yeah, go ahead and just give your name to the clerk right now.
Hi, my name is Heather Erickson. I'm a Realtor with Ojai Valley Real Estate. I sell a lot of mobile homes in the valley. My concern is that, I do know, outside of the city limits of Ojai, there was a mobile home park that was just put in in the past few years. I know it's different than the, the tiny homes, but it is a mobile home park, a manufactured home park, at eighteen eighty-five Maricopa Highway. It's in the Oak Haven Mobile Home Park. The owner of that park also owns the Ojai Valley Estates, which is right next door, and they were approved to have that park put in by the County of Ventura, only if they made it a sixty-two and over park. And that's because of the congestion on traffic-wise, and they figured that sixty-two and over don't, they don't have as many that have driver's licenses, which is crazy, I know. But that's how they figured, sixty-two and over, I know, I know. But what I'm saying is, they only approved that park based on those terms, and with twenty-two units going in, and that's it. So I just don't see personally and business-wise, how we could make this work with the affordable housing, meeting the affordable housing guidelines, and putting in a tiny homes village within the city limits of Ojai, being as, the city of Ojai is so much smaller than the surrounding areas, and the congestion that that's going to bring in the town. And how long, I do have a lot of questions as well, so I'm just kind of putting that out there, just to, I guess, start up the conversation, or work into the conversation. But I do know that there's more information that we would all like from the Board of Realtors, but also I just have concern with, I feel that we already have, we have affordable housing here in town, and I do understand that we need it, but how many people can one of those occupy? And if it is a husband and wife and children, can they occupy that? So there's just so many questions that have to do with this, and I think that before any decisions are made, we really need to look into all the aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. Could, did you get the lady's name? Yeah, okay. Okay.
No disrespect, I, I really, I have a solution, and I think my-
No, we're, we are not debating this right now, but thank you, appreciate it, just, okay. We will now take the subject back to the council for discussion.
Mayor Johnson?
Wait till Randy, can you shut that off?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out.
Let me help you.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Well, the mayor has to tell me, the mayor has to tell me to go ahead.
Right, okay.
Mayor, go ahead and have Bill go.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Bill.
In furtherance of the need for public investigation, information gathering, and, and investigation of this affordable housing concept, I'm going to move that the, that we authorize the city manager to sign the letter of support, authorize the letter of support with amendments due to form in terms of the, the particular, you know, whatever, title blocks and things like that. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion. Paul.
I'll start things off, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a statement, first of all, that there's absolutely no question that there's a need for affordable housing. a need for affordable housing in Ojai. And I'm talking about the city of Ojai. I've run five campaigns every single time I've run. An issue in the campaign was affordable housing. And working with Bill Miley, who was the speaker earlier, and Judy Murphy, we have proposed affordable housing projects in this town. One of which was on Site Ten, right behind us, and Site Eleven. And it was voted down, despite what I thought a great need, but it was voted down. There was some thought that it was somehow, it was alleged to be part of Libby Park, and therefore couldn't be used for affordable housing. But nonetheless, we need it, and that would've been a good site as far as I'm concerned. This whole issue of tiny homes, while on its face looks really cutesy and nice, I don't look at them any different than a single-wide mobile. And if they're gonna be on wheels...
A single one?
Single-wide mobile home. They just happen to be made out of wood, which quite frankly, to me, looks like it's a fire trap. We have to decide as a city whether we're gonna allow mobile housing in our town, because that's what it is. And if we allow mobile housing in one place, why don't we allow it somewhere else? If we're gonna allow tiny homes to live in tiny homes with wheels, why don't we allow tiny homes with wheels in our backyard or in our front yard? And how are we gonna hook to the sewer? And where's the infrastructure? And it's on wheels, what happens to the tax base that we'd normally get if it had a foundation under it? And if there's kids living there, and they're going to the school, they're not supporting the school because they're not taxed. We have no idea whether this is gonna help our affordable housing. If you, if you spend eighty-thousand dollars or sixty-thousand dollars on this mobile home, well, where are you gonna put it? Let's say you put it in a place like this, well, where does the land come from? Is the city willing to donate valuable land to three to ten people that wanna live there over us doing things like infrastructure improvements that benefit more than ten people in the city? I don't know. So, I'm against the, I am not against the concept of tiny homes. I'm not against affordable housing at all. What I am against is us jumping into the middle of this thing when we have absolutely no idea what we're doing. So, I'm not gonna support the motion.
Mayor Joss?
Go ahead.
No, Randy?
I can wait. I have a bunch of things to say.
I think that the protocols are that everybody has their opportunity, then we'll have a second or a third round.
Alright, okay. First of all, the public needs to know that tiny houses on foundation and tiny houses on wheels have been discussed for almost two years. Okay, you can go back and look at the videos, at the transcripts, okay? This is nothing new. We've had experts come in and done slideshows, see how this could work. We're not discussing transient housing. All the things, all the derogatory comments about housing, people living in housing on wheels could be said about any renter. Any renter can pick up and leave, you know, anyone can leave. We're talking about standards. We're talking, we've been discussing standards, so that if you go back and look, you know, this, I didn't expect to have a debate about tiny houses per se. I was looking only at this proposal and explore, and the possibility of exploring a process that could be really good for this town. There is no one-size solution to the housing crisis. But the people, those among you who are homeowners, or who have multiple properties, as some of the speakers, are going to see this very differently from those of us who are spending seventy-five percent or more of our income on renting. I'm one of those people. My rent for what would, used to be considered a shack is now two-thousand dollars, and all the repairs are on my own dime, okay? I have money saved up for a down payment, but there is absolutely nothing that's affordable, okay? So, you're gonna see it differently. People are desperate. There are cities nationwide that are permitting people to live in cars. Homeless is, the homeless situation is growing nationwide. Ojai is not an island. It's impacting us. At our yoga center on, my yoga center on, in the heart of town, people are, homeless people are sleeping upstairs on the outside of the studio, okay? They're coming, okay? So, this is just one small solution for a limited segment of the workforce, you know, single people, college students, as some of the speakers said, there are homeowners who are, would be glad to downsize and rent out their home. This is just one. And nothing is going to be pushed on the community. You're gonna have ample opportunity to give feedback. The other issue, in order to qualify for this funding, what's the word? It's not a grant, it's an award, for, qualify for this award, it has to be walkable. It cannot be out in the boonies. It has to be, part of minimal living is car sharing, bicycling, walking, all the things that we wanna promote in Ojai. You're not gonna have someone living in a tiny house with a four-car garage that's big, three times as big as a tiny house. You're talking about something that's ecologically sound. It's green, it's a small footprint. When I look at the real estate section of the Ojai Valley, I am appalled by the size of the houses in this beautiful valley, okay? You're talking about economic justice here. That's what this is about. And if you want diversity in the Ojai Valley, you're gonna have to offer housing that's suitable for the yoga teachers, for the writers, for the artists, for all the kind of people that make Ojai unique, okay? So, this is a well, Vina Lozado, if, I mean, I'm surprised that people here that are sitting here don't know what was the word, what the plan is, because if you go online, you will see videos of successful tiny house villages. They're easy to find, okay? Some of them are larger. I looked at one today, it's six-hundred-and-fifty square feet, they have kids and dogs, and this is a warm climate. If you have a tiny house with a nice deck, as Vina had, you can, you know, this is the kind of climate that's suitable for this kind of living. And so, there's just one, one part of the solution. There's many, many solutions to the housing crisis. This is just one of many. And one of the standards that we have discussed many, many times when we've had tiny house discussions, is that you cannot, the, we would have in the ordinance, that they cannot be moved, okay? If someone moves it, you can't just go back and plunk another one on that property, okay? We have to discuss issues like homeownership, rental, all the normal things that you would discuss with any house. The reason for them being on wheels is not to make them transient, it's less expensive. That's the reason, okay? The wheels can be removed, you can put plants around it, okay? So, you can, you can laugh all you like, those of you who own a home, okay? But if I had a tiny house on wheels, I've lived here sixty, I'm about the least transient person you could meet. I've been here sixty-two years, okay? I came when I was seven years old, my mom was sixty-nine. So, you know, if I had one, I'm not gonna invest sixty-thousand dollars so I can, you know, pull it over to Oregon or whatever. Okay, that's all I have to say for now. But the walk...
Happy fingers. Okay, that's acceptable. Applauding and booing, we discourage a little, okay? Randy, your turn.
Well, so, you know, I went through, first of all, I'm the one who asked for this meeting to come back to council on today. We all discussed it last Tuesday evening and tried picking a day that we were all available to continue this. And one of the reasons for the continuation was the fact that people needed more time to actually look into this, and to read up on it as much as they could, so that we could have a better public debate. I'm surprised that we only had six cards. I actually expected fifteen to sixty, as many people in this room, I figured, would at least have wanted to speak on it, whether you're for it or whether you're against it. I would've thought you would want us to hear your opinion. So, I like to do this two ways. I wrote a statement, and I received quite a few emails and responses regarding this. And I'm not looking for this debate to be quick and be done in fifteen, twenty minutes. There's a lot to go over. I wanna go over every part of this application. I went through it for many hours, and I'm sure most of us have. So, I'd like to be able to come back to that part of it, but this is what I, this is what I wanna start with. I've been hearing a lot from the people who are passionate on many sides of the issue of affordable housing and tiny homes. Where recent issues like the OTED and SDRs have divided the community, it's my hope that we can instead work together on affordable housing, regardless of our points of view. This means that we start from the premise that we all love Ojai and are all concerned for its future. How we get to the future regarding affordable housing is what can be negotiated, hopefully in good faith. So, that's where we are as far as I'm concerned in this discussion process, is that we're here to gather information, we're here to share how we feel about this, and hopefully through this grant, I'm leaning towards allowing that grant to help us figure out how to go about affordable housing in our community. That's why I need to go through it and ask a lot of questions, because I didn't see that. In your grant, alls I saw were tiny homes, and I have concerns about affordability and it just being earmarked for tiny homes. So, here's some questions. How will tiny homes meet the needs of the people with low to moderate income, especially if they have a family of three or more? I have a difficult time seeing five people in a hundred-and-twenty square feet. So, again, those are, I'm not looking for answers, I'm just putting this out there. How many tiny homes will our community allow to address its affordability needs? So, again, we're gonna have to assess, what are the community needs? How many available spaces are there? So, as you, as I read these, think about that. How will tiny homes impact surrounding property values? How will tiny homes create more access to homeownership? Should we also study additional non-conventional types of housing structures? I wanted to see in this application, something about cobs and straw housing. I don't think tiny homes are the panacea. I think tiny homes are a part of the solution. But if we're gonna get a, receive a grant, and that grant is for five-hundred-thousand dollars, and I'm hearing that tiny homes are sixty to seventy thousand, are we talking a village of a hundred? Or are we talking a village of three? Or could we do a cob house part of the village? Could we do a straw bale house as part of the village? Could we then attach maybe three of the tiny homes as part of the village? That's what I'm interested in, and that's where I'm gonna be, that's where I'm gonna be leaning to, is figuring out how we can amend this grant to help us figure out how to be more inclusive into the affordability in this community. Will we have to circumvent the existing housing building standards? We're gonna have to question codes. If we do, is this a good thing? Is creating a subset of building standards for one group of people good for the community? And if we do it for one, well, we have to come back and do it for more. How will parking be impacted? How will, how will they connect to sewer water and electrical? And one of the things that Suzie just talked to is, if we have a tiny home that has, technically can be moved, are we then in turn going to allow additional decking? Are we gonna allow some type of storage container? Or, you know, as human beings, we're, we have a tendency to be hoarders, probably not a good term, but we do gather things. Where do we place the things that we've gathered if we're limited to a small footprint on a lot? So, those are the questions that I have, that I have up front that have been asked to me to get answers to. That's why this discussion has to continue. And I'm hoping that during the grant application, and if you receive, and if we choose to go that route, to support it, that we earmark these issues, and that we do a comprehensive study in this community with that funding on affordability. So, I'll turn it back to the, to the rest, and like to continue with some questions later on.
Mayor Johnson?
Bill, everybody gets a turn, including the mayor. So, the mayor's going to make his comments now, and then we'll have a second round. Jeremy, am I too close to the mic or too far away? I'm okay? Yes, I... When I ran for office, I was very concerned about civil discussions, and I think we've achieved a lot in that regard of us all getting together and talking about things. But part of a civil discussion is process. It's transparency, as some of the folks in the audience have already mentioned. And unfortunately, because of this perceived sense of urgency, we have a meeting going on on a Thursday at noon, which is not the best way for transparency on a hugely complex issue. I do not wish to spend the rest of the day debating whether we need affordable housing. I think that's pretty well clear, that everybody knows that's an issue, and it's not just Ojai's issue, not just the county's, it's a national problem, international, and I... So, let's start with the reason we had the meeting today. My view is, is that, you know, in order to get a discussion going, you have to have a sense of urgency. Anybody who sells, to get, finally get down to concluding things, they want a sense of urgency, because otherwise, people just kinda procrastinate or put off. Clearly, the city needs to spend more time on this, but, and everything after, you know, you forget everything I've said before the but. The, the idea that the city, who is supposed to be the policymakers of the community, to be endorsing or prejudging anything, I think is, number one, inappropriate. Number two, what we've been asked to do has changed several times. I met with some of the folks, and they had some really great ideas over a month and a half, about a month ago, I guess. And what we're talking about now is different, and it's different from what it was last Tuesday. And now, we say this is just a letter of support. You normally don't get a, you know, a letter from the Supreme Court when you're heading into trial for the first time, for some of the conclusions that are implied here. So, my feeling is, the discussion, the idea of charrette, everybody know what charrette is, it's sort of a French term, basically, that says the stakeholders get together and try to resolve differences and come up with a map to solve problems, is the big conclusion. Then there's another subset of that, which is design, once you've decided what your map is. We're not, this, at least I am not prepared to do that right now, but I am willing to say that I think the idea of charrette is a good one. And if that's all this is, I don't even see a need for the grant, because the city of Ojai has been charging people a fee on building permits, and the city manager, we have something in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in the fund for general plan, general plan update?
That's correct.
So, we have quite a bit of money, and I have brought this up every time we talk about priorities in the city, that we should be doing that. That is our legal responsibility, is the city council, and we should be doing it in a holistic way, because everybody, both in the audience and up here, have brought up the complexities of this. It's not just one thing. It's all the way from water and resources, traffic, affordability, maintaining affordability, environment, all those things can be done, and we have the money. And Mr. Crabtree, if he is still willing to, if, I know he's certified, or his firm is certified as a charrette leader, you know, we probably could do this at a fairly reasonable price and get everybody together to start talking about this, but the, I'm going along with Paul, and I don't mean to diminish, I think, you know, personally, I'm a backpacker kinda guy, and I like the idea of efficiency and minimalist. Now, I live with someone that my colleague here might consider to be a hoarder, my wife, who, we have lots of stuff, and she wouldn't be real happy living in a, in a small trailer or something. So, everybody's got a different idea of what's good, but call it what you will, and, you know, tiny home villages sort of bring up the image in my mind of the hobbits or something, you know? And it's very cute and romantic, and it is one, as Suzie says, one of the solutions, but it is not the solution. The solution to affordable housing is twofold, and without it, you're not, in a place that's desirable, you're never gonna get it. And that is, you need to be paying a livable wage for your workers, and you need to have some sort of rent stabilization. Otherwise, the free market eats up affordable housing in a desirable area. You will never have enough supply to push, push the price down. And we have people testifying, "I sold my house and moved to Ventura, living with a relative, and I'm building a tiny house, and I'd love to live in Ojai, and so, when my tiny house is finished, I want a place to put it." That doesn't do a thing for the locals that need affordable housing. It's no offense to people who don't live here, but that satisfies their dream. We, as a city council, trying to come up with affordable housing... We, as a city council, trying to come up with affordable housing, it doesn't do anything. So, what I would propose we do, rather than endorse, I think the idea of this grant, if somebody thinks the Fannie Mae, you know, I don't know, probably hardly anybody in this room knows what Fannie Mae is, they know it has something to do with mortgages, but fundamentally, they package derivatives and sell them on Wall Street. The only reason they're offering the challenge grant is because of pressure from HUD and the federal government. They just got, if anybody read the business section last week, I think they lost six and a half, seven billion dollars because of the new tax laws that the Congress just enacted. So when you put all that stuff together, this sense of urgency to get money from Fannie Mae, I mean, it's well-meaning, and if you can get it, and get it without us prejudging anything, God bless you. But I think we, as a city council, should be proceeding with our own responsibility, and to have that charrette on our general plan, with focus on affordable housing and all the other elements that feed into it. I don't see that us sending letters, you know, talking about the fire, you know, everybody knows it's, you know, the biggest fire in the history of California, and it may not, it's certainly not going to be the last fire. But as far as this little city deciding that they are the ones that need to be the laboratory for affordable housing, and it's going to provide any kind of relief in the short term for the people who are victims of the fire, I'm sorry to call it, but it's nonsense. It's not going to create housing in the short term. And nobody inside the city lost their house, and that doesn't mean we're insensitive to the people outside the city, but there's a whole big world out there that would love to be here, and a lot of people with misfortune that we'd like to help. I don't see this as the way forward. So, my feeling is, is, you know, good luck on the application, but there is no need for the city to be endorsing and judging anything in advance. And the good part of it is, and Grandy was aiming at that, which is getting as much information and getting the community involved in a transparent way. We can do that ourselves, and we can do that in support of this, and certainly tiny homes, you know, could be a part of it. But tiny homes are already pretty much a prefab home that the state of California now allows on just about every parcel in town. We could double the size of the community in terms of population right now legally. The issue is, is the code, the construction code. And when people say this is affordable, it is only affordable, you know, a lot of people go off the grid, you know, they want to live off the grid for a lot of reasons, and one of them is, is to get rid of all of the barnacles of government and the costs that have been heaped upon, living costs. But what I see here, you know, to not be disrespectful, but what I see here is the desire to live off the grid in the middle of town. Because the way in which it becomes affordable is that you don't have to pay all of the fees, and the people who are not paying taxes, the costs still go on, the government still has to pay those, somebody else is going to be paying them. And so, in effect, it is sort of a diffused subsidy that isn't going to really work. So, right now, we know what tiny homes are. Vina designed some very nice ones, go on the internet, and you can see what's available. It doesn't need to be proven by a grant, it's there. The city council, at the request of Councilman Wirick, is currently beginning the process of reviewing the regulations for making tiny homes potentially legal, so you can actually put them, and you could put one in your backyard. It's going to create a whole bunch of other issues, but that's where the discussion should be held, when we go through that process, and that has just barely begun. So, I see these as two different things. I think that the folks that want to do this, you know, good luck getting some extra money in the area to help support this, fine. I don't see it as a city decision. I didn't even get this until about a little more than 24 hours ago to read, and the letter that was on the agenda, I didn't get till yesterday, and changed the whole thing, and it implies things that I'm not sure we could live up to, even if we wanted to. So I think, and to be honest with the Fannie Mae people and with the public, we shouldn't be involved in this right at this point, and we shouldn't be in any way prejudging this thing. So, okay, Bill, your turn, second round.
Mayor Johnson. I obviously have a different point of view from the mayor. And the reason is this, I think most of the issues that have been raised are exactly what this process is supposed to look into. This is part of how we explore these issues, by supporting efforts like this. And I want to read something from our general plan. Goal one, policy one, in the housing element of our general plan says, "The city shall facilitate production of new affordable housing through direct involvement in the design development process to best accomplish low-impact development principles." I think that's what this grant's, this application is all about. And for us to possibly be the difference in terms of supporting it by endorsing this letter, doesn't commit the city to anything, except that we think it's, we say it's a good effort. It will help us have a community process to answer all the concerns and questions that have been raised. It is a means of hopefully getting more information about how we ought to develop and move along and evolve our codes, how we administer those codes, because that's as much of an issue as anything else. And so I guess I'm going to implore my colleagues to say, to think about this as a letter of support that might help get this kind of support to help answer all the questions that have been raised. And so I would implore my colleagues to please think about this as not committing the city to anything, except for supporting a process of community conversation and community investigation into this issue. So I don't think it prejudges anything, I think it actually supports a community process, and that's it. And I would just implore my colleagues that have expressed doubts about endorsing this letter, support to reconsider.
Just for a question for Councilman Wirick. The grant is, we're not the applicants, and we're not the one that's going to receive the money.
No.
So the city has no claim to those funds to do anything?
Nor any responsibility for contributing.
So, why do you need us?
Because when an application like this goes in and is being reviewed, an important element is whether or not the city officially believes it's a worthy effort. Is it part of the commitments we've already made in the housing element of our general plan, and we recognize that we want to support these kinds of efforts? And our housing element is very clear, that we are supposed to find whatever, you know, support any opportunity that comes along along these lines, to look into affordable housing options. So the difference, when you are, when the people that are, you know, I think they call this the expert advisory panel, is looking at this application, it could well be the difference between whether or not they award this, whether or not they get a support letter from the city of Ojai. Could be a difference.
What would be the difference if the city was the applicant?
Well, first of all, that would involve staff time, staff commitment, and probably a commitment of some sort of resources or land commitments that I don't think anyone's prepared to make until we have the very conversation and the public investigation process that this effort would support, if indeed it was awarded to the applicants. The other thing is, one of the applicants is the Green Coalition, which is already, basically, you know, it's a supported agency on the part of this council for exploration of many things, including sustainability options, and means of low-impact development principles, the very thing that's cited in our general plan. So I think that we're basically also supporting an organization that we contract with for providing programs of service to the community. And in fact, one of the things that came up in budget review is we act and encourage the Green Coalition to be searching for and looking for outside funding to leverage what the support the city has for what they do. And so this is, again, a letter of support to basically say, yes, we appreciate the effort the Green Coalition is doing in further into the very direction that this council gave them. So I think, I think it's an extremely important principle involved here, that we support efforts in this community as a whole to come together to look into these issues. And that's really all we're talking about doing, is supporting that.
I guess that my question is, if the city says that this meets our general plan, or meets our goal of affordable housing?
Well, it doesn't meet the goal, it's a, part of our general plan is to look into, to investigate, to look, as I just read.
Right. But the, we have no control over, we have no budget in front of us as to what it's going to be used for. We, we have, right, but we have no idea, do we know for a fact it's going to be $500,000 or nothing?
It's an application.
Okay.
We're supporting an application, the motion on the table is to support the application.
That's what the motion is, to support the application. We can't know everything.
That's it.
Okay.
And I think the city attorney would probably be popping out and correcting me right now if anything I said is incorrect relative to any legal commitments being made by the city for this.
Right. But he wouldn't correct your opinions, right?
Of course not.
Yes. Right. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to react a little to that. Our general plan says we're to facilitate it. There are lots of ways to facilitate it. We can facilitate it in parallel with what other people are doing by taking the money, we charge a fee for a specific purpose under the laws of California. It's, if you don't spend that for the purpose for which it was identified, and the amount of money you collect is not in excess of what the cost is, you can do that. If you go in excess of that, you know, if you're charging people things for undetermined purposes, they call that a tax, and under the laws of California, you can't tax people without them voting on it. So we have a fee that qualifies to do exactly what you're suggesting and to facilitate the charrette, which I think is a great idea. I think we can do that. I think this other thing is separate. The reason I have real problems with that letter is it is implying that we are in support of changing our zoning laws, creating what in effect is a proven approach called a mobile home park or a trailer park, and there will be free land to make it more affordable. So those are the things that we should not be suggesting we've decided are good ideas until we've had our process under the general plan review, and then we can decide by vote what things we're willing to do and what things we're not willing to do. It doesn't seem to me that the, if the only reason they need us on their application is to get it through, then everything we say, you know, has significance, and I don't see why we want to do that right now. We're not against it, and if it was just for a charrette, that would be different. That's just simply exploring all the ideas, but this is much more than that, and we don't really have a lot more time, I think tomorrow, or is it tomorrow the deadline, to go back and start over on this. So...
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. It seems like there's an implication, this $500,000 is just for the charrette, but it's in two parts, and maybe Paul or Vina, you could clarify, there's $250,000, there's two pieces, right?
Well, I wasn't suggesting, I was not suggesting that the $500,000 was for the charrette. I'm just simply saying, the charrette idea, which is only a piece of it, is a good idea. We could do that without becoming involved in any grant application.
But the reason for this is so that if the charrette shows that this is a good thing for the community, we can then go forward, we have money to go forward. Am I right? So that we can actually do something.
Yeah, for the charrette, it's $200,000 for the whole process for about a year, and then we're dedicating about $60,000 for the building of the prototype, the movable prototype, and then another $100,000 for the entitlement and permitting of the prototype. So, we actually have three different pledges for $60,000 to go into the grant or the award. And I also want to make two other comments. The other part of the grant is to explore tiny homes on a foundation, that's about 400, 400, 500 square feet. So it's not specific to a movable tiny home, we're completely open to having it on a foundation also.
Well, we're, again, language and words, now we're talking about movable rather than tiny homes on wheels, where it started. And we had, in fact, you and I, Suzie, had a meeting with some of the proponents on the idea of tiny houses on foundations, which has merit, but it keeps coming back to zoning and coming back to code. And I think that was mentioned by Paul and some other people that testified in the community. It is the regulations that add to the cost, and so just waiving the regulations is not the, you know, the state of California has made this much easier in a lot of respects. And I'm not quite sure if we want it affordable by design, because that is what a tiny home will do for us, is affordable by design. Why it was that the council made a decision that they didn't feel that, you know, having small homes, which would guarantee they would be more affordable, we needed to have a regulation on that. But the law allows us to do all that. What we need to do is look at the prefab tiny home ordinances and see if there is a way to allow things without sacrificing fire safety, earthquake safety, and other things that have to do with construction, to create more dwelling units within the city. And personally, I much prefer the idea of them being granny flats or being in somebody's backyard or on their property, where there's more dispersed and what they call, what is that called? Inclusionary zoning, where you put the affordable housing not all in one place, and you put the extra houses not all on one site. I think those things make sense, but those are all planning considerations. We have a perfect right to explore and a responsibility to explore. If the council wants to do that, and I encourage them to do that, we can do it without endorsing something that we have not really fully vetted. And that doesn't stop the people who are applying for it from going ahead, but it doesn't necessarily have to have us involved.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table, right?
I have a couple more questions. Can we ask Vina to come up and answer some?
More questions?
Vina, I'll ask you, because it seems like you're the head of this process, unless there's someone else that...
I am the lead contact, and I'm partnering with Ojai Valley Green Coalition, is the nonprofit organization, and they will be the ones receiving the funds, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition.
So is anyone from the Green Coalition here?
Sure. Lita is, has spoken to Severa Laurel and Tim extensively, they weren't able to attend unfortunately, but they do get the, have the unanimous vote to be included as a partner for this grant.
You see how that reflects on this conversation? The lead agency that's going to be, that's going to be managing this resource isn't even here to talk about it. But that's, I'm just, I'm just showing that I'm not looking for any Q and A from anyone, I just, I'd like to ask Vina some questions.
Sure. Lita wanted to stay, but she had to.
Do you have a sense that you're going to be in any type of conflict, seeing as how you're heading this or co-chairing this, and that then you're going to be part of the design? Are you being paid anything in this project?
So if you see the budget that was given to everyone at the city council, there was...
Actually, I'm sorry for cutting you off, but I didn't, was that given to us today?
Yesterday, yesterday, early yesterday.
This is my call.
Yeah, I didn't get that. I'll be honest with you. So, that's how, you're reading the budget, and I'm asking myself, where's my budget? So I didn't, I didn't get to see that. So, are you being compensated in any way?
So if you see the budget, $48,000 is allocated for owner's representative, and that would be for Ojai Valley Green Coalition to administer all of the different funds that came. This second item is myself for Soul House, designed to facilitate the design and the construction documents for the prototypes, and that's $20,000.
So you are being paid?
Yes.
Okay.
As one of the applicants.
Okay, and then on...
That was sent to you yesterday.
Yeah, I just didn't, I was up late reviewing all this, and I truly did not see that. So I'm sorry I did not receive it. I just want to go, like I said, I just had some questions here. Again, how can we include Cobb and Strawbill structures in that? Again, how can we include Cobb and Strawbill structures in this grant? Does it have to be in the actual written application or you can do it outside of it?
You can, well, it's actually in the application to create fire resistant building materials. And that's why I proposed the foundation based tiny home, because typically very heavy building materials cannot be put on a trailer. So I thought the foundation based tiny home is a really good option to propose super adobe, straw bale, whatever type of really fire resistant building materials is available.
So how would that differ from the ADUs that are already allowed in the community? You know, up to 1,200 square feet?
Correct.
So I don't think we had a limit on, on the bottom, we had a limit on the top?
Correct.
So, so how do those differ?
So the 400 square feet or below is not legal to live in, in terms of a loft, for instance. You cannot actually have a sleeping loft that's legal, that's below the seven foot high clearance for head, for headroom. And also you can't have ladders legal to access the bedroom loft. So there is another amendment called the Tiny House Appendix Q that we want to explore to be able to use 400 square feet or less for a permanent dwelling. So that's not current in the codes. That needs to be adopted within the state of California. And that's why we want to work with the city, because we are proposing amendments to the municipal code for movable tiny homes, not move, not tiny homes on wheels, but movable tiny homes, because that's not currently legal to be lived in permanently full time. That's why RVs are not legal to put on your property. So we need, we're requesting for that change in the municipal code.
Okay. So another question is, you cite the cost of housing in our community is greater than 80%, is higher than the, do you have a study? Do you have anything?
Yes, actually.
Where did we pull that information up from?
Paul had cited that from a specific article. He can speak more to that, but it's definitely cited.
So you do have something?
The source is right here in the letter.
It's correct.
Support, it has a citation.
Okay. All right. I can look that up. Okay, so. The process that I read of the charrette is, I think you guys have seven days.
Correct.
Okay. And then you just cited in your budget that you've set aside $200,000 to perform the charrette. Am I correct?
Correct.
So there's, there's, we're going to spend 700, or $200,000 on seven days of information gathering and, and processing? Or can you explain that a little better?
Yes. It's about nine or 12 months total, because there is a huge process involved. There's about three months, correct, Paul? I think Paul would be able to answer this better, because he's really the one who is an expert at that.
That process was laid out in the, in the application on, under item number 24, question number 24. What, what it involves is in the, in the first three months, it's preparation where you're, you're doing a lot of the public reach out, even during, during that first three months. You're meeting with the realtors, you're finding out who, who are all the, all the interested parties, meeting with them as much as possible, doing the research on, on, say, the affordability, what is, what are the actual demographics on it, that sort of thing. And it's being done by professionals who are specialists in those areas. Then a report is even produced prior to that seven day charrette that summarizes all of the preliminary research and, and outreach. During the, the seven day charrette, all of the professionals come, it's advertised widely for the public to come. And for all of the stakeholders, the, the other interested parties, reach out is done, done for that. And there's a way to turn that off.
Yeah, this is not right. Please take your cellphone out.
So that, that seven days, all of the professionals actually come with their computers and they're, they're designing and they're, they're meeting, they're meeting with the, they're meeting with everyone. They're meeting with the city as much as possible. They're trying to expose issues and start developing alternative solutions to them.
So who sets up the initial criteria for these experts to come in and look at? Who sets that up? The board, the five member board?
Right.
And that five member board consists of?
Based on what's in, based on what's in the application.
Okay. And that five member, member board is two from the Green Coalition, correct?
Right.
Two from within the city, correct?
Right.
And who's the fifth one?
Vina was, was another one.
Okay. All right. One other question I have in here is number 20. It says indicate the project's geographical focus. And I was just wondering again, if all of the adverse impacts that regarding the Thomas Fire were in the county, have you discussed this with anyone in the county? Is this a process that could be done co-city, co-county? I mean, is there?
Vina could probably answer that better. I would, from the charrette process angle, yes, you'd want to involve the county in solutions and, and uncovering issues.
I've reached out to the county executive offices at least three months ago and spoken to Tracy Mokale, and she had been supportive of the grant. But she needed to really speak to the board supervisors to discuss the movable tiny home concept. So that's when I said we also want to explore the foundation based tiny home as a prototype for accessory dwelling units, because they already have one created for 1,200 square feet and 700 square feet. And when I told her I wanted to create one for 400, 500 square feet, she was completely supportive of that idea. And Habitat for Humanity also wanted to support that.
So the question is, you've contacted Susan, you've contacted Bill, and I believe Johnny now within the city. Have you personally contacted any county supervisors? Have you had a sit down with Mr. Bennett? Have you, at what level have you engaged them?
Tracy Mokale had spoken to them. I hadn't spoken to Steve Bennett and the other members myself. Tracy was the one who wanted to facilitate that discussion. And she wanted to get more details on that prior to.
And that was three months ago that you initiated?
No, it was January.
Okay. All right. And so they haven't gotten back to you?
Well, they said that they were, not the board of supervisors, but Tracy said she was definitely supportive of the tiny home based.
Okay. And Tracy again is who?
She's the management analyst. She, she deals with affordable housing issues within the county executive offices. And I've already also spoken to Cindy Cantle.
So I, so I guess what I'm going to is the fact that you've contacted council people in the city and they have weighed in in support of this. And I guess my question is, the county would be probably a greater source of resources when it comes to varying degrees of lands. I would think that they would have been a primary and we would have been a secondary, just speaking today.
The difficulty in that, it's not considered a sustainable option, because there is different factors regarding walkability and amenities that are close by. So for instance, Paul had stated that anything outside of the city limits would be not conducive to a multiple dwelling concept, because that would be outside of the, it needs to be annexed, basically.
So, so again, there's nothing in Miners Oaks, there's nothing in Oakview that are, that are adjacent to community centers or Marimonte.
I've consulted with them.
We researched.
In fact, Krishnamurti Foundation four years ago, it has applied, two plots of land next to Oak Grove School and next to the Loma Vista RV Park. And I consulted with the county, but they said it needs to be annexed, because they don't support anything that has the amenities that are required to be considered sustainable, so it's just walkability and close to shops. And Paul can speak to that.
Okay. And I had a question for the, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And because they're not here, I was just wondering, if they're going to supervise or they're going to oversee this grant, do they have, do they see it presenting any conflicts with, let's say, the monies that we're providing them to provide services in a like manner for the community? Or are they going to create a separate body within their structure that's only going to oversee grant funding monies?
Correct. So the first line item that you see on the budget is $48,000 for them to hire an owner's representative. And that would be, depending on what the legalities are, they could be just hired as a consultant under Ojai Valley Green Coalition. So as far as I understand, that, as long as it's not part of the city, the contract cannot be given to any government official, elected official. So if the Ojai Valley Green Coalition hires someone outside for $48,000, then that would not be considered a conflict of interest, as far as I understand.
This challenge doesn't allow the city to be an applicant.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. And then I, why, one of my last questions here is, is again, I want to get back to this, the folks that said they're willing to donate money. I'm, I don't understand that. Are they donating, donating it on top of the grant or in, I, I just need a better understanding of that.
So what I have is about $60,000 allocated to the build out of one prototype for movable tiny home. There's been at least two or three different people who are sitting here in the audience to say that they would be, they would want to pledge for, for that build out, for the construction of one tiny, tiny home prototype. And I can have them speak to you.
Well, I'm just wondering, so what's the condition of that donation?
They would, for the construction of one tiny home prototype, that's the condition.
And the condition is that they don't have any strings attached that if I donate, I get to live in one? If I donate, I get to, you know, there's no other strings? They're willing to give?
Who owns the unit?
Those are a lot of the things to be discussed during the charrette. And...
So that's an unknown going in.
How long has the coalition, the Green Coalition been involved in this application?
Since it was introduced, since January.
They were the applicant?
Well, we've been...
Yeah.
Right. How long have the, have the Green Coalition been the applicant?
I'm the liaison and the concept of tiny houses has been discussed for many, many months.
How long have they been the applicant, is all I'm asking?
Two months. Severo Larro, as you know, has come up to the podium to say he supports this effort.
Yeah, he supported. I'm just asking, I didn't see that on the applicant when we met a month or three weeks ago.
The applicant, this was just finalized as of a week ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even when Severo spoke last week, he was just speaking in support of it.
Right.
Yeah.
So it appears that now, you know, maybe to be coarse about it, that the Green Coalition is now sort of fronting the operation as opposed to having been the original applicant? Is that for, for a variety of reasons, I suppose?
We, we don't want to put any more...
Pressure.
Taxing on their existing staff that's already very taxed. So we wanted to provide the option of them being able to hire someone else to manage and administer the funding and coordinate that with Paul Crabtree and, because I don't have resources, I...
And how long, how long has Green Coalition been in the budget for $48,000?
Since we've, the past week, since we've been working on this grant together.
So, Mayor, I just have a couple of closing questions here. The, as Councilman Wyrick stated, right now, we don't have, alls we're doing is, is addressing a letter stating that we're in support of this group seeking this funding.
Correct.
Okay. But ultimately, if you achieve the funding, and ultimately, if you design this site, you're going to have to come back to us and we're going to have to make a decision then, do we support you or not support you? That's a big dilemma. It's going to be difficult to say, no, we're not willing to give you city property or community property when you received $500,000.
No, but I think, I think that's the point, is that, in, in order, you want full information and full public vetting before we ever even face to make a decision like that. And this is the point, are we going to support developing models from these concepts for us to consider with full information and full public vetting?
Okay.
That's all we're asking to support.
That's, that's fine. Like you said, I'm, these are questions. Then I, then the one is, and, and the mayor touched on this too, is how do we keep these units or this, or this venture in community development in Ojai affordable? Is that going to be part of the charrette discussion?
Of course, of course.
Yeah, that's in the, in the grant, is, in the application is to look at the economics. That's, that's part and parcel of what this is for.
I have two, there were two proposals. One is prefabricated modular and the other one is pre-permitting process. So for, for instance, for the ADU, if we were able to come up with a standardized plan that was pre-permitted so that you don't have to hire an architect and a structural engineer and a Title 24 engineer every single time, and it's already provided at the city, sort of like a garage template, where you just have all of the drawings, all they have to do is say, that's the, that's what I want, and it's determine how much the permitting fees are, then it can really reduce the time and the cost for permitting, which is one of the big challenges for the cost of the project. That's at least a third of the cost, sometimes 25,000, I think, is for an accessory dwelling unit permitting.
Okay. I'm going to have, I have a, a closing statement when we're done. But I just have one last thing that I'd like to say to the community. I've heard a couple of people come up today and talk about poor living standards that they've observed in this community. And I'd like to know why that hasn't been turned into, to our code enforcement. If, if we don't know about it, we can't do anything about it?
Okay.
And it just, it just concerns me that I hear these statements and, and...
Right. And that's a separate topic over there. Vina, before you go away, I, I have, I have a question for you.
Let's get this all done.
We keep, I keep hearing prototype, but my understanding is, from some of the testimony here and what I've seen on the internet, that tiny homes are not new and that you yourself have designed tiny homes. So I don't understand the, the use of the term prototype as opposed to, you know, something else, because it seems like it's already proven. It's just a question of being able to put all the pieces together and locate them on free land to make them affordable.
Part of the cost is customization. Every time you do one design different each time, it costs quite a bit for the designing and for just implementation. So if we were to come up with a prototype that can provide different types of flexible situations for a single person or for two people, as a couple or, you know, a family, and if it was modular so that it can be done over and over again, the same thing, with just flexibility with the window locations, et cetera, we would be able to reduce the cost quite a bit. So if you can do it the same way each and every time and prefabricated, that's what I'm proposing to, in a way to reduce the cost.
Mr. Mayor, just one more comment. One of the, one of the difficulties I have with the proposal is that it's come to us as a proposal for a tiny home village. That's the way it's been presented and that's the way that it's, everybody's talking about tiny homes, tiny homes and tiny homes.
And affordable.
And affordability. Well, we have, one option is tiny homes on wheels. We have tiny homes not on wheels. We have RVs, we have mobile homes, we have hay bale homes, we've got other types of...
Manufactured houses.
Manufactured houses, double wides, single wides, triple wides. But this is tiny homes that's come before us. If this came to me as a proposal for a grant to investigate every imaginable option that we have for affordable homes, I'd be much more inclined to support it. But I'm not inclined to do it, because it's come to us specifically for tiny homes. But yet everybody said, well, we can talk about this and we can talk about that. But nobody has come to us with this saying, we're here to ask for a grant to investigate all alternate methods of building, to bring the affordability down, to look at every option, whether it's on wheels, not on wheels, what zones. It came to us because we wanted to do a tiny... to us because we wanted to do a tiny home village. And that's the part that I'm having a really hard time with, because we're not there yet.
It seemed like the first statement or question would be, let's own some property that would be with the usage of tiny homes, village or trailer parks.
Could I, could I respond?
Yes.
I, I don't think that we have decided whether we're going to have what you would call a village, or tiny homes nestled on odd-shaped pieces of property that can't be used for any other purpose. There are so many options we can explore with this funding. I, I think, it's not my understanding that we're only looking at a concept of a village. That's not my understanding. Can, can Bill?
Yeah. I'd like, I think we've all debated this. I'm ready to. I know we can't, I'm just asking, I think might be good just to vote.
Yeah. Because all these things will come up in the process.
Okay. Is that a call for the, move the previous question?
I'm asking, I'm requesting.
Yeah. Well, you moved the previous question.
Okay, I'll move the previous question.
Okay. Is there a second? If not, okay.
Second, I was the second.
Okay, let's do it. Okay. Call the roll.
Excuse me, I just have, I just have one more thing I wanna say here.
You actually have, you have to actually vote on this motion, you do not, before we can...
We'll, we'll vote on it. We're not going anywhere. Sir, I would just like to interject before we...
Is there any legal issues?
To move the previous question, Randy means that that gets voted on, and if it gets voted down, then you can proceed.
That's correct. The motion, the motion to call the question takes precedence over, unless you have a point of personal privilege, it takes precedence over additional debate. The option to have additional debate is to vote down the motion to call the question.
So we need to...
So, well, I need to clarify that. So in other words, if I wanted to add a couple more comments to this discussion, I need to vote down this?
The motion to call the question, yes. Correct.
You don't want the debate closed, is what you're...
Right.
Okay.
This motion is to close the debate or not.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
That's what Councilman Wierich moved for.
We don't need to debate the motion, to debate the motion. Call the rolls.
Right. A yes vote on this means we're closing down the debate.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is now on the floor, the main motion, which is, I guess, to accept and the letter as, as drafted, which has clear implications of...
Well, now, they're editorializing outside of the motion. The motion is...
Wait a minute. When the motion is voted on, there's no editorializing. We're not voting yet. The motion's now on the floor.
You're saying it, it has implications. The letter is the letter. It reads by itself.
Right, okay.
It's a letter of support.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney? Or Mayor Protam Haney?
See, this is what bothers me. It just does. It just bothers me. And I don't appreciate the fact that, that we're not allowing a more open discussion on this. For some reason, we need to shut this thing down and get out of here by two o'clock? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Well, again, I guess someone will have to shut me up. But I'm gonna support this, and I'm gonna support it for a simple reason.
Randy, I think Mr. Wierich made the, the point that we are not to be editorializing. At least he didn't want the mayor editorializing, which I honor that.
Then you're getting a yes from me.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Okay. Motion passes on a three-two vote. It's probably not terribly helpful to the application, but so be it.
If the letter doesn't say it's a three-two vote...
No, the letter's not...
Oh, well.
I'm telling you, bullshit.
All right. It's a little bit of a...
Yeah, right. That's all we have on the agenda, is that right? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, then. Meeting is adjourned.